We have a nice, small cozy group. So I'm not even going to jump up on stage if that's okay with you. I'll just stand down here and talk with you. My name is Ty Rowland. I'm a partner in Aloya Rowland, which is a firm right here in Fort Myers. We've been downtown. Frank Aloya and I started the firm, I think, going on near 19 years ago. We have a number of different lawyers. I'm proud to have several of my partners here with me tonight. Evan Lubel, you may have met as you came in. He's standing outside. Scott Hertz is here. Jonathan Martin, our newest senator in the state of Florida, is also here with us. He's one of my partners at the law firm. And we've also got some very, very good friends from another law firm up in Pensacola that I'm about to introduce you to. This first caught my eye, I'll tell you, because I'm not a Marine, but my father's a Marine. And we laughed when I told my dad about it. I feel like I learned the Marine Corps hymn before I learned how to sing "Happy Birthday." I knew every word of it, and I knew it before I learned how to sing "Happy Birthday" to anyone else. So I'm not a Marine, but I feel like I grew up certainly in a Marine household. So when this came up, you can imagine, no doubt, it caught my attention. I didn't walk under the lights of Paris Island, and I wasn't in Camp Lejeune, but it was important when my own father called me and said, "What is this? Is this something I need to know about?" So I said, "Dad, honestly, I don't know, but sure, I'm going to figure out what the heck it is." And so who do I call? I called the same people that I've called in the past when environmental-type issues that touch the law come up. We've, over the course of 10-plus years, 15 years, have developed a very, very, very strong relationship with Levin Papantonio up in Pensacola. So what you learn when you work in the legal arena, you learn that with some cases, mass tort cases, there's typically a very, very small, finite group of law firms that really know what they're doing. If you watch television late at night, you're going to see a large array of law firms that say they know what they're doing, but frankly, there's a very small group of law firms that really know what they're doing. We're fortunate enough to have one right here in Florida, in Pensacola, and that's Levin Papantonio. So from Levin Papantonio, tonight, today, we have Carol Moore, who's been a legal investigator on specifically environmental issues for 40, 45 years, I think Carol has been doing that. You've got Mr. Justin Briers, who's sitting in the back, who's an environmental consultant with their firm, who really understands the nitty-gritty of what happened out there at Camp Lejeune. What was happening from building to building, location to location, and how that may have touched anyone's lives out there. And then lastly, who I'm going to turn the floor over to her, but certainly not leastly, is Sarah Papantonio. And Sarah really is on the tip of the spear right now as it relates to these cases, and we're very, very glad to have this group here to try to talk and answer questions that you might have. So thank you all for joining us tonight. It's a pleasure to meet you, and I hope we can be very informative for you today. Thank you. Sarah?
So I've gotten to talk to a few of you guys, and I really appreciate what you've told me so far. And it sounds like we've got kind of varying degrees of knowledge of what happened on Camp Lejeune. So I'm going to start with the basics and kind of go through what we know, what the government knew, and really what your options are in terms of filing a claim or bringing litigation in this case. Because what we're seeing consistently, and what I know that you guys are experiencing, is several calls per day, several texts per day, 1,000 emails per day, all claiming and all promising things related to this Camp Lejeune case. And so what I want to make sure you understand are the options that you have and where the misinformation regarding this case is. And to understand why I'm able to give you that information, is our firm has been involved in this litigation for almost a year now. So there's something called the Camp Lejeune Justice Act that was just enacted as law in August. Our firm has been involved in getting that legislation passed and promoting the legislation well before it was passed. So we really have been at the forefront, and we know information as it becomes relevant. We're also one of the only firms who has a lawsuit currently on file in the Eastern District of North Carolina. So we are going to be that top source of information that we are able to give clients and we're able to give our law partners about this Camp Lejeune case, because there is just so much going on. And so what we'll do is we will start from the very beginning, is why are we even here? Why do we have to be in this room today? And the unfortunate reality is, for 30 years, between the 1950s and the 1980s, you had extensive contamination occurring on Camp Lejeune's base. The reason you see hundreds of emails per day, hundreds of commercials per day, the reason you're being called, cold-called, all the time, is because the sheer number of people who are potentially affected by this. So just to put this into perspective, Camp Lejeune is a Marine base where basic training occurs. So if you live on the eastern part of the United States, you're almost guaranteed to move through Camp Lejeune as part of your training. So what we have estimated is that between that timeframe, roughly 30 years, about a million people, men, women, children, Marines' families, were on Camp Lejeune and potentially exposed to the water. Now, what that does not mean is that a million people have developed some illness as a result. It just means that they were exposed. So what we do as law firms, and as kind of people who have really investigated this as a deep level, is evaluate where people were on Camp Lejeune during this timeframe, what chemicals they were exposed to, what type of injuries that they might have had as a result. And like we said a few minutes ago, Justin, we've got an environmental engineer who can pinpoint place, location, amount of exposure, type of injury, and can really boil it down to, does this make sense or not? So when I talk about contaminated water, what we're seeing are three main regions on the base where this water contamination occurred. And this is again, over the course of 30 years. So the three hotspots are going to be a place called Tarawa Terrace, Had Not Point, and Holcomb Boulevard. Those three locations are primarily housing locations for Marines. But those are not going to be the only places this exposure occurred. Because what we see is, on Tarawa Terrace, there is a high school, there are gyms, there are gymnasiums, these are communities essentially where even if you don't live there, you could be exposed at some way, shape, or form. And when we talk about what these contaminants are, we're talking about four major types. You've got, I'm going to shorten them, TCEs, PCEs, benzines, and vinyl chlorides. And the unique aspect of this case is they basically all came from different sources. So a lot of times, we have to ask ourselves with this case, is how are we 40 years later and suddenly realizing that this occurred? And it's largely to do with the government knowing and not sharing that information with the public. So when this all began, when we started to learn about the contaminants, what the focus the government was putting on was industrial waste runoff. So the government began blaming industrial waste from a laundry source. And that laundry source would have been on the Tarawa Terrace region. To understand how this contamination occurred, you had what's called ABC cleaners, and that is this red box right here. And each one of these little blue circles is a water well. So this ABC cleaners was creating industrial waste. They were just dumping detergents and all kinds of stuff into the water system, which created what we call a plume. And if you can see, if you squint really hard, you can see that this TT26, this water well, started becoming engulfed by that plume of contaminates. And so TT26 then feeds all of these other water well sources. So it's almost like a spoken wheel in terms of this contamination. As it grew bigger and bigger, the water sources started feeding to others, and then you had the entire Tarawa Terrace area drinking contaminated water for that period of time. So that's how this happened, and that's how it went unnoticed for so long, is because it was that spoke-and-wheeled-type contamination process. The same happened in Had Not Point. Had Not Point, this is an example of all the neighborhoods that were contaminated in that spoke-and-wheeled-type way. So Had Not Point was on a completely different area of the base. So the government then had to ask themselves, "Well, what we're seeing is a completely different type of contamination with completely different chemicals and no dry cleaning source around it, so what's the problem here?" And what they learned, and then covered up for several years after, is that there were hundreds of thousands of fuel tank gallons of petroleum leaking into the water source. And we know that actually, because one of our first experts that we hired had approached the government in the 1980s after testing the water at Camp Lejeune and said, "You guys have a real serious problem here. This is beyond what is safe for drinking. You have to clean it up." And the government ignored them, right? For 10 more years, they said, "I don't know what you're talking about. Everything's fine." Covered it up, and then just let people continue to drink the water. So that's when, when we talk about this being a huge government cover-up, that's what we mean. You know, it got to the point where it was so bad that they realized that it was a problem that they couldn't fix, and so they stuck their head in the sand until they couldn't ignore it any longer. The rate at which we saw these is why you have so many people who have injuries associated with the Camp Lejeune water. So when we're talking about these chemicals, they're all what are called known human carcinogens. And those known human carcinogens were found at rates that were significantly higher than what the EPA had deemed safe for human consumption. So the EPA will come out with a standard that says, you know, "If you have one part per billion of a vinyl chloride or a benzene, you're going to be okay." We saw this contamination at rates that were 200 to 300 to 400 times what the EPA had deemed safe, and that's why this became so significant, and that's why we're talking about it now. At one point even, they found that there was a layer of petroleum sludge that was about 15 feet high and was sitting over the water tap. So it has been described as one of the worst contaminations in American history, and it's the absolute truth. So I got into this a little bit, but it just identifies the timeline of events of when the government became aware of this, why they are now admitting liability to it, and kind of how we got here. So in the 1980s, late 1980s, is when the scientists started coming up to them and saying, "Hey, you have a problem. Hey, this isn't safe. Close your water systems down." They ignored them, they ignored them, they ignored them, until 1987, and they suddenly and finally closed down the systems. After that, they continued to blame the laundromats, they continued to say, "It's not our fault," until people really started identifying the petroleum leaks and the gas tank leaks. Then, about 10, 15 years later, the government starts to acknowledge their wrongdoing, and they start opening up benefits for veterans who have been affected by it, and they list out a certain class of injuries. So there was about eight or nine injuries that the VA deemed to be associated with Camp Lejeune water exposure. So the eight or nine injuries that they deemed to be related to Camp Lejeune were only allowed to be made claims by veterans, right? So if you're a veteran that had one of those injuries, you can make a claim to the VA for benefits. The problem is, is that family members, children, you know, a whole host of civilians, contractors, were on that base drinking the water as well. So it created no remedy for children, wives, aunts, uncles, who were on the base as well. And that's when you saw a firm come out and try to really change that. If you've kind of done your research on this, there's a guy out there named Ed Bell, and Ed Bell is one of our law partners that we work with on this. Ed Bell championed the Camp Lejeune Justice Act. So he recognized the issue that not enough, you know, this doesn't help the family members, so how do we create a law that does? Because in the 2010 timeframe, we tried to bring these actions against the government, but we're ultimately thrown out. So we're thrown out because the, and we were rightfully thrown out for several legal issues because laws said we were not allowed to bring this action. So what did we do? We created a law that said we were allowed to bring this action, and that is why we are here today, 40 years later, allowed to pursue this litigation. Okay, and a couple things about the Camp Lejeune Justice Act. So the Camp Lejeune Justice Act allows us to bring lawsuits on behalf of men, women, and children who are exposed to Camp Lejeune water and develop some kind of illness as a result. There are several procedural steps that we are required to do. The first step is that we have to file an administrative petition on behalf of you or the injured party. And what that means is that we have to submit a request to the Navy JAG Corps, the Department of Navy, that says, "I or someone I loved was stationed on Camp Lejeune for 30 days or more, and I developed this type of cancer or this type of injury. I'm requesting that you pay me X amount of money, and if you do not pay me that, then I'm going to pursue this action in court." So that's our first step, and that's the step that law firms across the country right now are doing. It's what I'm doing day in and day out, is I'm putting together what we call the Camp Lejeune Claims Forms on behalf of the person injured or whoever's bringing it on their behalf. And so that's what we have to do. Right now, all of these, what we call administrative petitions, are sitting at the Department of Navy, but the Department of Navy is incredibly behind, as the government typically is, and incredibly slow in reviewing those. So we're still kind of in a holding pattern. We haven't heard anything from the Navy. None of these claims have been answered, none of them have even really been evaluated at this point, because the Navy is still trying to get themselves in order so that they can have the infrastructure to even evaluate these claims. So based on the Camp Lejeune Justice Act, once we meet this procedural requirement to submit our administrative petition to the Navy, we have six months to allow them to review that claim. And if they do not respond within six months, then what we will do is file that case in the Eastern District of North Carolina. The reason we are specifically in the Eastern District of North Carolina is because that is where Camp Lejeune is located, and that is where the Camp Lejeune Justice Act requires that we file this litigation. So some people ask me, "Well, you know, I live in Florida, or I live in Kentucky. Why do I have to file my case in a court that I don't live?" And the reason we have to do that is because that's what's listed in the Camp Lejeune Justice Act, and that's where the judge is going to hear your case. But the next question becomes, "Well, do I have to travel? And do I have to go be heard in the Eastern District of North Carolina if I live in Florida, if I live in Texas or Kentucky?" The answer is most likely no. There are so, so many of these cases out there right now. I mean, several thousand have been, I would say, tens of thousands have been filed with the Navy JAG Corps already. And so the question then becomes is, how does the judicial system, or how does the Department of Navy even handle all of these types of cases? And that's kind of where our firm comes into the picture, because it's our job to figure out a way where we can streamline this litigation in a way that we can make it most beneficial to you and most quickly resolved. So the way that we anticipate these cases are going to be tried and handled in litigation is they're probably going to be litigated based on type of injury. So what we will do is, in order to prove, let's say, we'll have to first prove that a Parkinson's is directly related to benzene exposure or a TCE exposure. Once we prove that, then we will be able to show the court, "Hey, my name is Sarah. I have Parkinson's, and I think it's associated with my Camp Lejeune exposure." And we believe that that'll be a quicker way for the DOJ, the government, to come up to us and say, "Okay, now we are ready to create some kind of settlement matrix, because you check these boxes, and we can give you X amount of money." So that is the ultimate hope in this case, is not that we litigate every single individual case, but that we litigate the major issues and then create the ability for the government to come to you and resolve your claims individually, if that makes sense. Okay. This is another reason why you see so many lawyers involved in this, because what the Camp Lejeune Justice Act does is it makes it easier for victims to have their day in court and to resolve these claims. And the reason it makes it easier is because what it does is lower what is called the burden of proof in this case. So the burden of proof is what all lawyers have to prove in order to show that your case meets certain criteria, or that we have enough evidence to show the association. And so typically, in civil litigation, the burden of proof is what we call more likely than not. It's 51%. If you can show that 51%, then you win. And that 51% is very, it's a pretty high burden for most of us. What this does is it changes the burden to what's called at least as likely as it is not, meaning 50/50 chance. And just to kind of understand the significance of it and understand why that's important to your case, is because 50/50 chance means if I get in front of a judge, or if I get in front of a jury, and I say, you know, "Members of the jury, sure, Sarah smoked for five years, but she was also exposed to Camp Lejeune's toxic water for five years. So was it, and she developed a lung cancer as a result. So was her lung cancer as a result of the smoking, or was it a result of her Camp Lejeune exposure? And there's a 50/50 chance it could have been either. She wins. You win that case." And so that is where the government has kind of thrown us a bone and indicated that they are very willing to settle these cases and resolve these cases, because they understand their wrongdoing by lowering that burden. And what the government has also done with this litigation is they have waived what is called government liability and government immunity in this case. They have essentially said, "We understand we did wrong, so you don't even have to prove that. All you have to prove is that this, your Camp Lejeune exposure, is related to your injury." What's called general and specific causation. And so that takes away 50% of what we have to do in litigation, and it makes it a lot easier to resolve these claims. So how do we prove these cases? We recognize that it has been 40, 50 years since some people were on Camp Lejeune, and that it's, there's an issue getting those records. And so again, the government is willing to work with us and not require as much evidence as you typically would. So all we have to show is what's called proof of exposure, and what that typically comes from is what's called a DD214. Every Marine who was in the military, as they left, was given a DD214, and typically what you see is what their, the locations that they were at stamped on that. If it's not listed on the DD214, the next place we look is their Record of Service, which stamps every single place that veteran was located. Sometimes it's very difficult to get these records, and you might not have them at all. So any type of record that would show you were a Marine, or that you're a family member of a Marine, or that you're a child of a Marine, and you were stationed at Camp Lejeune is going to be sufficient. And again, this is helpful from the government, because they understand that these records are decades old, and we might not have them all. So then the next thing we have to prove is a proof of injury, and that is just a proof of diagnosis. The good news is, is we're not in a position where we have to submit thousands of pages of medical records to the Department of the Navy or the Department of Justice. All we have to show at this stage, at the administrative stage, is that there's a proof of diagnosis. So that would come from any diagnosing medical records, any death certificates. That is kind of how we show, "This is the illness." There's another, if you are in the Marines and you go to the VA, there's something called myhealthyvet.com, where you can just download all of your medical records in a matter of minutes and submit them to the law firm, or take a look at them, and that's probably about the easiest way to get those records. Okay, so what is the timeline on this litigation? When do you have to act? When do you have to determine whether or not you want to pursue a claim on your behalf or on someone else's? And the answer is two years from the date of enactment. So the Camp Lejeune Justice Act was enacted in August of 2022, just a few months ago. So you have two years to act on that. And that's what's called the statute of limitations, and that's how long we have to bring a claim on your behalf. I'm going to kind of get into the frequently asked questions, and then what I'll do is open it up if you guys have any questions. The constant question that we get is, "How does this affect any VA benefits that you have received, currently received, or could receive in the future?" So what you need to know about this litigation is that it is completely separate from anything you're doing with the VA. Any VA benefits, any offers made by the VA, this litigation is on a totally separate pathway. What we do recommend though, is if you have the opportunity to pursue benefits with the VA, as well as this claim, that you do both. And the reason we suggest that is because this is going to be an incredibly long process, and I'm sure from the sounds of it, I think many of you have had an experience with the VA, and you know that it is very difficult to get any type of benefits. And what I'm hearing actually is that they're significantly more receptive to injuries that they weren't receptive to in the past. So it might not hurt to go ahead and try again if you've already tried in the past and been denied, because the government is, again, like we said, they're admitting liability, they're accepting responsibility, and they're trying to keep a lot of people out of litigation, so they're offering benefits. So there is benefits to going both pathways. So the next question becomes is, "Okay, well, if the VA is giving the money, if I'm getting benefits from the VA, what's the point of suing or pursuing a litigation? What's the point of suing the government?" And the response to that is, what the VA does is they support you economically. They pay your medical bills, they pay some of your lost wage bills, and they will be there for the losses and the damages that you can see and that you can touch, economic damages. As lawyers involved in this litigation, we are able to pursue what is called non-economic damages. And those are going to be the important damages. Those are going to be the ones we really focus on here. And the non-economic damages are the damages that we cannot see, that we cannot touch, but that we feel, right? It is the pain and suffering that you have felt after being diagnosed with leukemia. It is the loss of consortium after losing a husband, or a child, or a mother. You know, it is the, how the day-to-day care of taking care of someone with cancer has affected your life. And that is what we are going to fully focus on in this litigation, is sure, you can get your economic benefits, but we really want to open the floor up to those non-economic damages, because that's what the government can't help you with. And that's ultimately how we're going to try to make you, we'll never make you whole again, but we're going to try to make it better for you. And so that is why there is benefits in going both routes, to the VA and to the litigation route. Because the next thing you'll hear is something called VA offsets. If you read the Camp Lejeune Justice Act, or if you read anything online about it, what you'll see is a lot of chatter of what is called an offset involved in the Camp Lejeune Justice Act. And what that offset says is that if you have been receiving money from the VA for an injury that is directly related to Camp Lejeune, you have to pay the VA back. All it means is that you cannot double-dip in the pot, right? If someone is paying your medical bills, you can't profit. You have to pay those medical bills back. It is very typical in litigation, it's, you know, it's like a lien. If insurance is paying your medical bills, we pay insurance back. But a lot of people get freaked out by this, because they're worried that it's going to affect their benefits, or that they're going to be left with nothing in the end, because the VA has paid X amount of dollars to date. But if you are concerned about that, what I do want you to remember is what I just talked about, which is those non-economic damages. The VA, in terms of this offset, can pursue the economic damages, the medical bills that they paid. They can offset your overall settlement with that type of economic loss. But what they can't do is touch those non-economic damages. So even if you are getting paid out by the VA significantly, I still recommend you try and go for this litigation, because there is the opportunity to get those pain and suffering-type damages.
May I inter- I want to ask you a question one more. The VA damages payments, that, this is particular, that has to be related to the injury that you're-
Yeah, exactly. And so it's very, very nuanced. So, and I've talked loosely with you guys, so if the VA is paying you a percentage disability, so if you're 100% disabled, but 10% of that is hearing loss, and 50% of that is back pain, and 20% is PTSD, and other 20% is a cancer, that might have been associated with Camp Lejeune. The VA can only, your overall settlement, if we're able to recover for you, can only be offset by that 20% that the VA has paid. So you can only take that portion, and it has to be directly related back to Camp Lejeune. So if it is cancer, but there's no association to service, the VA still can't touch that. Only if it's related to Camp Lejeune can that offset be applied. So that's significant, because you're not, one, you don't really see a lot of people having their illness associated with Camp Lejeune, because like we talked about, the government has jostled people around for the last couple decades. I think you will see the VA start to associate more of these illnesses with Camp Lejeune, but it's really not going to apply to that many people as it stands currently. Really, the whole point of this is, I'm not here to get you to sign up with any law firm. You know, this is absolutely your own decision, but I just do want you to be aware, and I want you to be informed of the issues that are out there and the options that you have. Because right now, you do have a lot of predatory law firms who are just doing anything that they can to scoop up clients, but they're not actually speaking to you, they're not describing the issues to you, they're not walking you through what this litigation is actually going to look like and how we're going to do it. And the two firms that you have here are absolutely the best of the best. Like, they are, they're going to take care of you in many ways, and so we just want to make sure that you understand that you have resources and you have options. that you have resources and you have options available if you want to pursue any type of litigation here. You got to prove it to an extent. Remember, we have a lot, it's a lot easier for us to prove. But what you have to remember is, is these chemicals have been around for a long time. So in the 1970s, you have the major, what we call IRAC, and what the major kind of scientific reporting groups coming out and saying that these are what are called probable human carcinogens. And they base that off of extensive animal studies that show that these types of chemicals can be linked to cancer. So that's what we start with. There's tons of research out there that shows the causal element between, let's say, a type of cancer and that type of chemical. What we also have, and what kind of brought us here, is the government conducted an extensive epidemiologic study in the early 2000s. And what that means is they took hundreds of thousands of Marines that were all stationed at Camp Lejeune, and they studied them for a period of 10, 15 years. And they were able to create that science and create that literature and create what we call an association between where the Marines were on base and what type of illness they had. And that gave us the very, very strong science we have now so that we can go to the judge and say, this is based on human studies. We know that it is scientifically, it can be scientifically proven that benzene causes leukemia and TCE causes Parkinson's, and so on and so on. So Justin is our guru. I'm still learning which ones lead to what because I'm trying not to do all the scientific literature. But what Justin has done is he has broken down all the types of injuries and what we would expect to see out of the area base that they were, the time that they were exposed, and the type of chemical that they were exposed to.
Sarah, can I interject and try to help answer that question and try to put it in context? Because this is one of those things that, when we first started learning about it and hearing about it, that was absolutely extraordinary. The idea that the burden of proof has been shifted to someone like me that's committed their career to being in front of juries and bringing enough proof to convince a jury or a judge. I mean, this is what I've committed my career to. When you hear about the burden of proof shifting, it's extraordinary. We all watch enough television to know reasonable doubt, we hear about that. The reasonable doubt burden is about as high as you're going to find in our courthouse. And you apply a reasonable doubt burden when you're talking about taking someone's life or liberty from them, right? Tick down. Clear and convincing evidence is maybe the next standard down. It's very high. When you're going to take someone's children away from them, you've got to prove by clear and convincing evidence. So in our courthouses, it's step by step by step by step. If I'm going to prove your typical injury or death case, you heard it. It's by a preponderance of the evidence. I need to tip the scales. This case is completely different. You don't need to tip scales. The scale can stay dead even, and you meet your burden. That's so striking to lawyers like us that do this for a living. And to me, it's telling. It's telling that someone, someone on the other side knows how bad it was and what needs to be done to create an even playing field now, despite it be decades later than perhaps it should have been. The burden is different. And that goes to the heart of your question, and I'll tell you, to me, again, is one of the most extraordinary things about everything we're learning about here. The intangible damages that Sarah mentioned. Think of it like this, I tell people all the time. When your loved one calls you up and says, hey, I was just in a car crash, the first question you're going to say is, are you okay? That feeling you have in your stomach and your chest? Those are the intangible damages. Maybe the 15th question you ask, hey, how's the car? Okay, those are the economic damages. So while the VA may be taking care of some economic damages, there are some real damages that you can feel in your heart and your chest. And that's only accounted for here. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Thanks, Sarah.
Yeah, that's a great question because a lot of people who go through basic training and a lot of people, you know, live all over the base. The primary points of contamination are going to be in this area right here. I know Geiger is over here, you've got New River around there. So even if you didn't live in the hotspots of contamination, that's what I was trying to talk about a little earlier, but I didn't really do a good job of explaining that, is that's not a requirement. It's not a requirement to live in Terre Haute Terrace or Had Not Point or Paradise Point. But because there are so many recreational facilities, and there are so many different points of exposure. And to explain that, I'll explain it using benzene exposure. So benzene is another one of those nasty chemicals that we saw on Camp Lejeune. But benzene is more harmful through inhalation exposure. And so the idea is, is that it's, we are still pursuing claims on behalf of individuals who are all in this area because there were different points of exposure throughout the whole time. So at times, if you were in the kind of highly contaminated areas, even if you were walking on base and there were sprinklers or there was, you know, showers or there was restaurants or gyms, you still were in theory exposed, drinking the water, drinking the coffee, you know, eating in the mess halls. And so they're still viable, if that makes sense.
Sure, all of those roots of exposure that you mentioned, it can be, all of these chemicals can be absorbed through the skin. They can be inhaled when they volatilize. They're known as volatile organic contaminants. And the main source, since the water was contaminated, is ingestion. Whether you're cooking, which also you'd be ingesting, and if you heated up the water, you're making pasta, something along those lines, you'd be inhaling it as well as ingesting it. I'm kind of a detailed guy, so I don't want to get too in the weeds. But these contaminants, just take for example, TCE, PCE, and vinyl chloride. When you ingest them, it's not necessarily the chemical itself that causes the problem. Your body actually metabolizes it. And when your body metabolizes it, it goes through your liver, it goes to your kidneys, gets in your stomach, and that's when it starts causing the problems. Those metabolites that your body breaks down into, those are mutagenic, carcinogenic, and that's where your problems end up. Most of these chemicals have a half-life of about 48 hours in the body. However, if you're exposed every day, those concentrations just keep rising in the body, and your body can't excrete those things, which cause even more problems.
I know, I talked to each one of you at the very beginning. If you have any questions specific to your case or a family member's case that you'd like to talk about, I will talk to you individually. And then from there, if you have any questions for these guys, just hang out, eat some food, chat. But thank you, I appreciate you coming.